All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to our, uh, we've got a special meeting tonight. Uh, it is, the time is now six thirty PM. So we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Uh, Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
Counsel Perser.
Here.
Counsel Williams.
Oh, I'm here.
Counsel Cryer's excused absent. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Here.
All right, we've got agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
We motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing done. Would you please poll council?
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Affirmative.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. With that, we're gonna move into public participation and tonight, since none of our i- agenda items are, uh, public hearings, um, the only time the public will have a chance to talk on even any item that's on our agenda would be now during the public participation time. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak on anything either on this agenda or not on this agenda, uh, now is your opportunity. Does anybody want to speak? If you'd like to come up and it's not on our agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you want to state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Jim Cook, uh, twenty-three thirty-one South Fifteen Road, Glade Park.
All right, you've got three minutes to
Oh, you guys know who I am because we've been working on the Enix Lake thing. Uh, first of all, I want to thank council for allowing us to have that extension to try and get this thing uh, open to the public. I really, it's really appreciated. We got a little bit more time to work on things. Sadly, we haven't got anybody that would partner with us. We haven't got any way to buy the property. So we're just, I'm just here tonight to see what is gonna happen. But, uh, wanna thank you guys all for what you've done and about all we can do.
Thanks, Jim. All right, if you'd like to step up and state your name and address for the record.
Steve Romo from eleven thirty Aquarius here in Fruta. Um, I just want to say that I don't believe that Fruta ought to be involved in recreational areas outside of our city limits. I think that if this property is gone, the money could be used to correct the problems we have at, uh, at Fruta Reservoir Number Two or be spent here in town on our parks and things local. I, uh, have eighty-eight houses in my HOA. I don't know everybody, but I know a lot of my neighbors. Nobody uses that. It's not a Fruta recreational facility, and I don't think, I think our money could be better spent.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a public comment tonight? This will be your only opportunity. All right, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Rod Power, and, uh, I'm one of the people that made an offer to buy Enix Lake. And, uh, I've, I've been a landowner on Pinion Mesa for almost sixty years. And during that sixty years, we put, uh, me and my partners have put approximately, uh, more than somewhere between three and four thousand acres in conservation easements. The property that I own presently, personally, is somewhere between four and five thousand acres, which is all at a conservation easement. So what I've done is, is I've spent my life, you know, making sure that Pinion Mesa was not, you know, subdivided. And in addition to that, my partners have all done the same kind of thing. You know, we're, we've been good stewards of the land, and we continue to be that. And what we do is, is we recognize, and we've talked to several people in these agencies, and all of them, you know, privately, they say, hey, you know, we don't wanna, you know, come and say anything about it, but we know that we would have the same problem handling that, you know, that Fruta has. So, you know, if any of you got any questions of me that you would like to personally ask me, uh, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ron, this is just public comment time. So if we have questions, we would ask that during a public hearing.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? This is your only opportunity tonight. All right, I'm seeing none, so I'm gonna close public comment, and then we're gonna move into our agenda items. So our first item is the Enix Lake proposal, and we've got Kimberly, Kimberly Bullen, uh, our, um, Public Works Director here to present on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. So, uh, we're here tonight at the direction of City Council from the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular City Council meeting, uh, at which time council directed staff to work with our city realtor, uh, Lori Chesnick, who is here tonight, uh, to list Enix Lake property on the MLS until November eighth of two thousand twenty-three at the appraised value of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the listing included information that the property is encumbered by the Yoot Water Right of First Refusal and the two thousand thirteen agreement with Mr. Tipping for repayment of the non-monetary obligation as well as an agreement with Stan Mur for the delivery of water. It also includes information that the dam is a jurisdictional dam and is subject to the requirements, rules and regulations of dam safety from the state of Colorado, and that the ultimate, um, sale would have to be approved by City Council through our ordinance process as designated by our city charter. So I think at this time would be, um, great to invite Lori up to talk about the proposal that we received and have you answer any questions that you might have at that time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Lori.
All right, what, how do you want to do this? Do you want to have questions for me, or how would you like me to proceed?
I would like you to kind of read over the proposal that you got and give us kind of what your
Okay.
input was, and then we can ask questions.
Well, I'll go ahead and just do a little overview real quickly. Um, the offer from the three buyers came in was basically the same offer apparently that they had a, they had presented to the city prior. Um, it basically will come out to a value of six hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents. The actual purchase price is five hundred thousand dollars. And then we add in the im- information, um, that they're gonna forgive or waive that was to the tipping contract. So the real estate commission would be based on a five hundred thousand dollars versus the six hundred and forty-six thousand. Um, they have, it's a cash transaction. They have included a addendum to the contract, or I should say, or additional provisions that they are and I'll just read it right from the contract. Ronald D. Tipping, Stan Mur, and Rodney C. Power are willing to permit public access to Enix Lake on a limited basis. Government agencies such as Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Mesa County, City of Fruta may be able to reserve Enix Lake, but must provide adequate insurance protection for the liability exposure, including coverage for the above-named purchaser-buyers and their entities. So they are going to put forth that they will allow public access with those caveats. Um, what else can I tell you?
All right, does anybody have questions for Lori at this time?
How many offer, did you receive any other offers besides this one?
No other offers. I sent out fourteen packets of information. Seven of them were to other real estate brokers or agents. Um, the last one came in on the seventh at five PM when I met the buyer at my office and printed off the sixty-two pages of the documents because it was, he said it's a hundred pages. I don't want to print it off. Come on down, pick it up. Um, I had ten specific phone calls regarding the sale of the lake. However, the lake came up in many conversations, agents or buyers would call on other properties and say, oh, by the way, I hear the lake is for sale. And, and I would give them the general information that the public has.
Thank you. Um, is there a proposed closing date? Is it with it being a cash offer, or you do accept this tonight in the ordinance?
Well, we would have to go first right of refusal. So we don't have a closing date because we're not sure how long Yoot Water is gonna take and the whole process that, that you all need to do for it as well. But once that process is through, yes, the buyers are willing and ready to close immediately.
Mary Elizabeth can probably answer that a little bit better.
I think it'd be just great to re, I'm asking to reha- uh, to recap what the, the process is.
Sure, of course. So, uh, tonight you guys would decide whether or not to move this offer first to Yoot Water for them to decide, uh, whether they were gonna exercise their right of first refusal. Um, if they decide not to, then it, uh, it would move into the ordinance process. And that would be a first reading like before to set the public hearing, um, as the mayor mentioned earlier, uh, which would be second reading. That would be the time, um, if you did have any questions, you know, for the buyers, you know, you would be asking it then. That would be the time for any public comment specific to, to that ordinance. Um, it'd be also the time to modify the, um, or potentially change the offer if that was something that was acceptable to uh, the buyers as well. Um, I worked, I talked with staff and Mike. I don't know if this is what you were getting ready to say about setting uh, first reading. So you could go ahead tonight. Um, what staff's recommending is go ahead and also set the first i- again, if you decide you want to move this offer forward, um, go ahead and set the first reading on the ordinance because that way you're not, you can work in tandem. If you just taking longer, you can always, you know, set the second hearing out, second reading out later if you need to. In my conversations with Yoot Water previously, um, they had indicated that, uh, second go-round on Enix, since you remember back in July, when you did go through the ordinance process, you'd had decided not to exercise this right of first refusal. They did want to see that, see it any other offer again, but they indicated that decision would be made at the staff level and not have to go wait for a, um, board meeting, et cetera. So it's probably gonna be faster. But this way you can at least get the process started with the first reading, you know, and setting the second reading and the hearing.
Um, just to refresh my memory as well, when stuff, when did this first become public knowledge about this offer? When did we have the first reading originally about this property?
First reading about, you mean back when you had a prior, the prior first reading for the ordinance process was June? June of two thousand twenty-three?
Perfect.
So almost six months ago. June twentieth. Thanks, Kimberly.
All my questions for now.
Just want to ask Lori something. Um, you had mentioned that the buyers had talked about, um, the possibility of public use, um, that we could reserve it. Um, I, I want to thank them for that because that wasn't something that, that they originally was in the original deal, and they knew that that was a concern, and they, that's out of the goodness of their heart. I mean, really, that, that you guys brought that up. Um, I just wanted to kind of dive into that a little bit. What does that look like? Is that just saying like if the city of Fruta wanted to have a day up there, we could reserve it? Is that kind of what that's looking like? Or could you just kind of explain that process a little bit more?
Um, when I met with the buyers, they brought me in a handwritten note with the statement on it that they had talked about it between the, the three of them, the buyers, and that they knew it was important to keep it as public as possible. However, with being open to the public, there is liability. And like, we have, they did not share the ins and outs of it. I think it would be bought by a case-by-case. City of Fruta wants to reserve it for two days for efficient derby or something like that. Have insurance, indemnity insurance available so that the buyers can, or the owners of the property can look at it to make sure that everybody's covered, and then would be responsible. That's what I think it looks like. That would be something that if it, the offer did move forward, we could flesh that out a little bit more in an amendment to make sure that everybody is, knows what's going on and what the responsibilities are.
Okay.
And Counselor Williams, I would suggest you that is for the public hearing. It's not really
Okay.
something we can hash out tonight.
Okay.
So tonight is just deciding you, you do have an offer in front of you, you know, do you start moving it forward? And then, you know, that conversation regarding that, that piece or any other aspect of the offer could be at the public hearing.
I, I do want it to go on record that I appreciate that they brought that up on their own. I think that's very kind. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? All right, I'm not hearing any. Do we have a motion? What exactly does that motion need to be? To, uh, move forward with the offer and present it to Yoot Water for review of their, uh, right of first refusal?
Yeah, if you look, Counsel Bremen, at the, uh, recommendation.
It's not at the one I'm looking at, sorry.
It is
Kind of wing that one. It wasn't on the page of paper.
Uh, that's good effort.
It is staff's recommendation to have council direct staff to proceed with submitting this offer to Yoot Water to see if they want to exercise their right of first refusal. And also to set the, uh, first reading of an ordinance for conveyance of said real, real property and water rights for November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and the second reading of said on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
It's on page three, the first cover sheet recommendation.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments?
I have a, a couple of comments. I'm really grateful for how we've taken action on this, this matter. Um, it's been, there's been a lot of patience by a lot of people, but I think it's in it was good in which we did for good faith to make sure that we gave ample opportunities, ample transparency to the community to uh, make sure all parties were aware and the option was there for anybody. And, um, so I just appreciate that we've taken what is it, nearly five months to, to get through this. I think that's, it's much better for the community and much, which we've done. And I'm just grateful for that we, as a council, um, made these actions to, to go through this process. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our second item, which is the briefing on the NRCS, um, the Dam Breach, uh, RFP. And we've got Kimberly Bullen here, Public Works Director, to present on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. Um, so a little bit of background on the briefing on NRCS. So back in April of two thousand twenty-two, we had reached out to NRCS and applied for some grant funding under the PL five sixty-six program. Um, thi- this is a watershed protection program, so they invest money in, in helping make improvements in a watershed. Um, we identified repair of reservoir two, as well as other infrastructure repairs, pipeline repairs, hay press diversion. Um, and in applying for that grant, NRCS awarded the city a fifty thousand dollar grant to conduct a preliminary investigative feasibility report. Money did not come to the city. It went directly to an engineering firm that was selected by the NRCS to conduct that work on our behalf. Um, we have not received the final report yet. We're still trying to get that from NRCS, but we did receive an email uh, that informed us that we would not be recommended for funding through that PL five six, five sixty-six program. Um, we're trying to schedule a meeting and hopefully that's, uh, forthcoming, but informate, some preliminary information we did get was that the economics just did not present well. Cost-benefit analysis just was not in favor of what we were proposing. Um, they did give us some, uh, real preliminary information. Again, I couldn't, I don't have the report to confirm the information, but um, some of the options were to repair reservoir two, approximately cost two point five million dollars. Um, repair reservoir two, the pipeline and the other infrastructure, they were looking at around approximately four million dollars. And then to decommission reservoir two, uh, is approximately one point three million. So those, again, um, we're hoping to get the report so that we can actually dive into it and, and understand it a little bit better. In waiting for that report, council also gave us direction to go ahead and proceed with, um, conducting an RFP for breach of reservoir two so that we could understand some of the costs around the design and construction. We did s- send out an RFP on September fifteenth with the closing date of September twenty-ninth. Um, we received five proposals from qualified engineer firms, um, two of which were disqualified because they didn't sign the acknowledgement form acknowledging addendum two. So we really, it boiled down to us, um, reviewing three proposals. Myself, John Krillo, our Public Works Superintendent, and Jackie Bloomberg with Dam Safety reviewed those proposals and compared notes to determine, uh, kind of what we were thinking in terms of who would be best to do that. What we didn't get in the proposals was construction costs, and the reason being is because the, the design of a breach is pretty intensive, and you've, we've got a special um, permit with the US Forest Service. We've got the dam safety rules and regulations, and so I think they need to dive into some of those requirements to fully understand the requirements to breach reservoir two. For instance, in our forest service permit, it was stated that we would have to remove the entire dam structure. Uh, Mike and I met with the Forest Service, uh, last week, I think it was, um, in which they talked about that, that maybe wouldn't necessarily be the ultimate, that we could maybe cut down the slope and um, we'd still have to remove some debris and stuff, but, um, so those are things. They also gave us some options and kind of a step-by-step of if we breach, we have to follow these types of requirements. If we donate land, we have to follow certain requirements. Um, we basically evaluated those proposals based on their submittal compliance, their narrative, project approach and methodology, their qualifications as a firm, and the experience of their employees, project understanding, pricing and timeline. Um, we, we recommend that if we do go forward with breaching reservoir two, that SGM was the firm that was um, most suited for this, primarily because of their understanding of dam safety rules, their experience with other dam projects, and an understanding of the US Forest Service Special Use Permit. Um, they were most comprehensive. They fully understood the project. The, I think in your, um, background information, you'll see that they were middle of the road in terms of the cost. Um, we had some that were twenty-four thousand, all the way up to almost a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, bill. And so SGM, we really felt was, uh, really suited for this project. Um, this is strictly just a briefing item for you guys tonight, so we're not looking for any action. We, we would definitely come back and make that, um, more of an official process. However, their, their proposal is, uh, valid until twelve twenty-eight of this year. So something that we need to consider.
So in addition, uh, to what Kimberly was saying, uh, one of the purposes for this item tonight was to update you, uh, brief you on both NRCS and the results of the, our, the request for proposals for breaching reservoir two. Uh, due to the timeline of those profo- proposals, if we were to take the next step, um, and just hypothetically, if we were to take the next step with working with SGM as recommended, uh, of the proposals that we received, that would be entering in, that, that would take action at a future meeting. So we would have to, we would have to move the money, first of all, to cover the cost and, and then execute the contract with SGM. And that would be, that would only be to design what it would actually take, uh, working with US Forest Service, especially with the newer information we have from US Forest Service, but also following their pretty in-depth, uh, uh, requirements to, to do a breach and what it takes to, to breach, uh, the, the reservoir. And then also working with, uh, the state's, uh, safety, a dam safety engineer, uh, to make sure that we're, you know, everything is, uh, put together to know exactly what it would take to breach reservoir two. So moving forward would cost a significant amount of money, but it's also not, it's not approving the breach per se, uh, but it's knowing exactly what that would take. Uh, keep in mind, this is the reservoir that has essentially been inoperable or, uh, because it's been under the restriction of a no-fill order for about seven years now. And when it has filled, we've had to, you know, we are required to send staff up on a daily basis until it gets to, as we siphon the water over, um, until it gets to a certain level, and then we go to three-day, every three days and every week and every two weeks and on and on. Um, in our conversations with US Forest Service, we also raised the question, one of the directions of council in some of the previous, uh, uh, meetings we've had, and public meetings we've had, was to, uh, get to a point which we're not at just yet, but to write up real offers of donation to these agencies. So as we were speaking with, with the leadership for the region, uh, for the US Forest Service, um, we brought that up and our, and our interest in donating not only, uh, any of these reservoirs, reservoir one, two, and three, and the land that reservoir four would have been built on. And they're very interested in the donation of the land, but they're very not interested in the donation of a dam or the water rights, um, because they don't want the cost or the maintenance, um, of those. It does, it, this is US Forest Service.
Okay.
Now, we still, well, th- this doesn't change kind of our, our next steps as we get further along with more information about still making a formal offer of, of donation to them. Uh, but I just wanted you to know that, that's, and which is the same feedback we've had for years, and we've brought this up multiple times with the agency, um, as well as Colorado Parks and Wildlife and, uh, more recently Mesa County. Um, our, in, in the years we've spent trying to figure out the best options moving forward, and then being pretty excited about this NRCS study to hopefully glean something that we've been missing, but knowing that we're not, uh, mi- missing something and not getting any kind of recommendation for more federal funding or things like that. It becomes more and more clear, and it, and it's been, been this way, that uh, we, we, we have the responsibility and we have the requirement of the state to take care of reservoir two. Um, for the first few years, uh, that was, hey, we're trying to figure out how we could fund it. Um, and then doing the study was kind of our last, um, one of our last straws with them of reaching to try and figure out next steps. Um, there's a lot of pressure now being over seven years that the city can't just, just can't leave a, a reservoir on a no-fill order forever. Uh, so it becomes more clear that, that as a city, we're gonna have to figure out a way to take care of the problem at reservoir two. Um, being that the, the difference in, in cost is, it gets fairly dramatic in, in repairing reservoir two. Uh, we would like to know what a real cost is for, for breaching reservoir two, uh, and work with SGM to be able to, to find that out. Tonight would not be the night to, um, approve any kind of contract with SGM or anything, but we, we would, we would be interested in any questions you have, comments you have, and interested in possible direction to at least proceed with setting up the, the opportunities for a budget amendment and a contract approval with SGM at a future council meeting, which would take future action and discussion at, at that meeting, but it would need to be done prior to December twenty-eighth. So we'd be looking at most likely our December fifth or December twenty-first meeting, uh, for, for those approvals before we could enter a contract. It's not something budgeted in this year. I can't sign that contract. We'd have to amend the, 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 the funds and have approval from the council before we would begin working with SGM. So we're curious if you have any questions related to that, any comments, uh, and any possible direction.
Buddy. Yeah, so according to what Kimberly's saying, they're saying from the SGM study, or not the SGM, but the, um, the study, the NRCS study, that approximately one point one million to breach.
One, one point three.
One point three, but then to repair it is anywhere from two to four million.
And, and that, that breach, um, these are estimates, so a- at a, at a pretty high level, but it's taken into account uh, more work than what US Forest Service told us last week would have to be done for a breach. So our anticipation would be, it's hard to know because that's, it's an estimate from NRCS versus working with SGM and getting an exact cost.
Would the Forest Service give us a contract kind of what we had to do where our, like, would we have a?
Yeah, so we, we have all that information, and those that made requests for proposals, uh, were to get that information and pointed to where it was. But we have all the steps, um, and SGM has worked with US Forest Service properties and through their process, which is one of the reasons we, we felt like their number was the, the most, you know, most accurate and what that we could rely on because of their experience doing this type of work.
And just to add to that, um, you're, whoever does end up doing the work, you gotta mesh both the Forest Service requirement because it's on their land, as well as the state's requirements for this is how you breach a dam in order for the state to be satisfied that there's no longer a reservoir. So it's gonna be, gotta combine the two. Um, uh, yeah. And it sounds, it does sound like the Forest Service is not gonna be as onerous. Like, the state wouldn't require you to move all the dirt away from the site, um, which is something we thought maybe the Forest Service was going to require, and now it sounds like they might not. So hopefully that's not as bad as we thought.
We do know that most likely a NEPA process will be involved, and that can be very time-consuming and additional costs as well. Um, and we know that we have to have a dam plan, um, submitted to US Forest Service as well as to the dam safety. So that'll be some of the work that the engineering firm would do.
And for instance, uh, breaching a dam is much more complicated than if we were to, um, go through, uh, to, to jump to like the donation process. So they have the review process for, for breaching and NEPA, those things, that, that could take Those things that, that could take quite some time. Typically, the forest service in the past would just cover the NEPA in-house. But they're so far behind that anybody doing any work on US Forest Service has to cover that cost themselves. So that's part of, that would be part of this breach and the design and, and all the work. From a standpoint of when they said they were interested in, be interested in donation of land. Even just a donation of land is one to two years for their process to accept land. So. So basically just trying to say anything we're doing with that agency is, is definitely going to take quite, quite a bit of time.
Oh, I guess my other question then is, so the bid that you're recommending from SGM, this is the, the design cost to figure out how to. How to breach it and then from that we'll have more or less a hard number on what it would, what the actual final cost would be.
Yeah, it would, it would create basically the roadmap, exactly what steps need to be taken for. The state and for the US Forest Service and the cost for breaching.
And at that, at that point, when we have that roadmap in front of us, it's. We pretty much either go down it or we're just kicking the can down the road and we don't really have time to do that anymore, do we? It sounds like that they're probably at the point. Another thing that.
Are we going to be at a point of either going down the road or breaching or, or spending double or triple?
A lot more later to get to the same position that we're already kind of in right now, right? If we do breach the dam, which we're going to have to do, but at that point, is it going to make it easier for us to? Would they maybe want it? The donation would change the dynamics of that.
At, at that point, we'd have to, we'd be going through a process of not having the rights anymore with the state for the water. And, and, and I, I don't, that's a, I don't know all the steps, but there.
It seems like it would make it more desirable after we've taken care of that step for the overall donation. We might be a little more.
According to US Forest Service in our meeting, they'd be interested in land, but again, never interested in water rights or, or.
And I believe Kimberly, correct me if I'm wrong, but is reservoir two located solely on US Forest Service property? So there's no, so once the dam is breached, it just, it reverts back to them because there's. Well, the city no longer has any right to occupy the land.
Yeah, at that point. Okay.
I think to your question though, I think it does help us maybe navigate one and three.
That's what I was trying to.
We've eliminated that. Of what you do with reservoir two.
Yeah.
As recently as today, I met with NRCS, UTEWATER, Mesa Conservation District, Rivers Edge West. And we were brainstorming just any kind of thought and different entities that we might talk to about the other reservoirs. I also have a meeting later this week with the State Department of Public Safety. To talk about some mitigation money that might be, we might be able to go after for the breach. Because we're dealing with a hazard mitigation component. So nothing's set in stone and that would have to, we'd have to have an MOU with the Forest Service. Because it's on Forest Service land. So.
Thank you for your diligence on that. I appreciate.
For bringing in those.
Side of the box, yeah.
Agencies too. It's really nice having other voices at the table. I mean, we've been, we've been sitting on this for forty years and it's nice to have other people. Finally.
Well, I think and Mike can speak to it, but the growing water smart workshop.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, a counselor Miller and I and, and a number of staff and UTEWATER staff. And the. Mesa Conservation District staff were all on our team. We were able to, we were with teams from all over western Colorado. Of other communities and this was all about water. It was with otter experts. We had the Sonoran Institute walk every team through a pretty intensive process for three days. I know many of you are already aware of this, but as we went through that process, it was mainly focused on and something we were very interested in learning. About is, is land use policy for using less water, right? So within your, within your community. As, as all the communities would talk about their biggest challenges with that, of course, we have, we have some of those where we look at things. Not of topic tonight, but you know, non-functional turf and how you reduce some of that. So you're not using as much water. In areas of your community that you need to or requiring high water usage when you develop. Ironically, then our big challenge was also how to, how to deal with water we can't use. That within the city and, and even with all those experts, it was, it was just a head scratcher to, to these people. Because here we are trying to find ways to, and this is, this is why publicly and perception wise, this has been a challenge, right? Because it seems like, well, you can't get rid of water, but we haven't been able to give away this water because of, because of the dynamics that are challenging for us. And anybody else to, to take that, especially looking at these three bodies that are tied to the Forest Service, right? And so it's been interesting. There were some good ideas to look into and, and like Kimberly said, we've been working with those agencies. And to figure out if augmentation are options and things like that, but distance from where the needs would be. Is, is proving to be very difficult for that as well. So we're continually and we are going to continue to look into opportunities there, continue to look into funding mechanisms for. Whether it would be repair or breach of, of reservoir two. Which we've not been successful on, while we're successful on many grants, it's been very difficult for finding grant funding. To repair or breach bodies of water on federal land. That's, that's a big change because you often can't use. Federal or state grants on federal property. But we have, we have some potential funding sources for breaching that we are excited to get some more information on.
And there's one other agency that we haven't talked with yet that I, I think we should add to the list and that's the Colorado Water Conservation Board. CWCB, they're the only entity in the state that can actually own water rights just for the sake of. Keeping water in the stream. You know, anybody else that adjudicates water rights has to have a specific use for them that actually is extractive. I know that sounds weird, but that's the way the state law is. So they could potentially be another. You know, they're, they are specifically in the water business. So that might be another option.
And that, that's one we're talking with Mary Elizabeth outside of this, we're, we're going to reach out to them and try and figure out. If, if there's any benefit in partnership with them for the rights of any of the water.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. I have like four or five items. So preliminary coming from this. NRCS is, there's no value due to the financial burden. Is what they're saying. No value in.
I haven't seen the report, so I don't know. I mean, I, I have tried to get the report.
So informally, we hear a little bit, well, we're still waiting for the full big picture, even though it's.
Right, but we were informed by the individual that I've been trying to get the report from that they're not recommending for any funding. So that's, we know that's a, a done thing.
Yeah, I think one thing we didn't mention was the whole hope with the NRCS study. Was a completion of the study to be recommended for another, we received funding for the study. And the goal was that the study would end with recommendation for funding for breaching or repairing or something like that. And we do know that they're not recommending funding because the cost benefit doesn't, doesn't add up. So I think to Kimberly's point, we haven't been able to read all the depth of the report yet. For some reason, they haven't turned it over. But the, the consulting firm that did the, that did this study and NRCS has confirmed that that's the result. So we can, we definitely can insinuate that there's, there's no, they're not recommending any moving forward.
What was amendment addendum two that?
Individuals. So the addendums were just things that we, we got questions from the RFPs submittals. And so we made clarifications and that went out as an addendum. Item and they have to, they have to acknowledge and verify that they got the addendum so that we know their proposal included everything with regards to that RFP. And they just.
An unfortunate simple.
Yeah.
Thing that disqualified them. Okay.
But we had two of them that did that. So.
Yeah. Um, let's see, we may or ask that question. You took a couple of mine. Thanks. Why are we saying that we have to make like the next step is by before December twenty eighth? Sorry if I missed that.
That's, that's how long their proposal, SGM's proposal is valid for. So if, if we go past that date, we would probably have to issue another RFP and.
So we don't necessarily have to, but if we're going to move forward with one of the proposals. That we currently have, we just, there's a deadline like a, like an offer to purchase or anything like that, right?
Mike, you said NEPA a little bit ago. What can you?
Uh, NEPA is a.
An acronym?
It is, sorry. And I'm, I'm.
That acronym.
I don't know if I even remember.
National Environmental Policy Act.
Yeah. So, so we run into this a lot when we're working with our partners with federal lands, whether US Forest Service or the Bureau of Land Management. For instance, when new trails are constructed, you know, on, around the city of Fruta on BLM land. There's a, there's a pretty intensive process that, which is called NEPA that they go through to evaluate the land and make sure there's. And I'm going to get this, there, there's a variety of studies and I'm not quite sure if they're all under NEPA, but to check plants and check, you know. Archaeology, archaeological pieces that could be in the land and all those things before anything would be disturbed, right? So they, you have to go before they, before they accept land, before they sell land, before they construct on land. There's typically a NEPA process for federal lands that has to be reviewed before anything can happen. So.
Okay, appreciate it. Last question, just to. Have made more known. So reservoir one and three are functioning reservoirs that are. We have the rights to the reservoirs, but they're on Forest Service property themselves.
One is partially on Forest Service and partially on city owned property. So that's a unique one in itself. Three is completely on Forest Service and we own all the water rights to all, all of the reservoirs.
And then the split of land that's with that one is, is bouncing over, that is different property than the hundred and twenty five. Land only where reservoir four is. Okay.
Well, where reservoir four was planned.
Could be.
There, there is no reservoir four. Yeah.
No, thank you. That's all mine, Mayor.
All right. Does anybody else? You don't need a formal motion right now or?
We.
Cause we just have to, you have to have a majority to know if we want to put it on a.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to put on a, on an agenda in December to, to move money. And, and to enter the contract if there's no interest at this point in time. If there's enough interest to put it through to those agenda, to those dates. Then, then you get to discuss and make a decision at that point. So it's not a, you're not, you're not deciding now for sure you're doing it. But do you want us to move forward with preparing that for a December agenda item?
I'm good.
Okay. Any, anybody that does not. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that, Kimberly. Good work.
All right. And then our next item, we've got Mike Bennett, our city manager presenting on the Fruta Mountain Properties Resolution.
All right. One other piece of a direction that the council gave staff at, I believe at the, yes, at the September nineteenth. Twenty twenty-three city council meeting was to prepare a resolution to provide public, public clarity on the history challenges. And why the city desires to divest the city's interests in owning and maintaining the Fruta Mountain Properties. We've taken quite a bit of time just going through the details. Most of all this information that's in the resolution. Is in the recaps or the summary and all the information on our webpage dedicated to Fruta Mountain Properties. I actually, for the record, I'm supposed to read this resolution to you and then see if you have any questions. And it's something that you can consider adopting tonight, or if you want to make any modifications or suggestions and we put it on a future agenda item. It's completely up to you. Resolutions are a statement from the council. But as background, the, the purpose of this was to have a unified statement to help clarify the information that we have on the website. And throughout multiple meetings of council and things like that. So that when people are wondering, if people are wondering why. Not only can we send them to the website, but there'd be a link to city council's statement on, on what we are striving to do here. So. It says a resolution divesting the city of Fruta from owning, maintaining and managing all city of Fruta mountain properties. Whereas the city of Fruta owns four reservoirs and dams, including water rides decreed thereto on the, the Pinya Mesa near Glade Park. Colorado commonly referred to as Enix Lake, Reservoir One, Reservoir Two and Reservoir Three and Springs and Pipelines. Opportunant to thereto as well as a, as a one hundred and twenty-five acre parcel of vacant land here and after. Called Fruta Mountain Properties. And whereas the Fruta Mountain Properties were originally acquired for the purpose of supplying domestic drinking water to the city of Fruta via. A hand-built wooden pipeline through the Colorado National Monument, which pipeline no longer exists. And whereas in nineteen eighty-three, the city of Fruta contracted with UTEWATER Conservancy District for domestic water service for the city. Because the water owned by the city on Pinya Mesa was no longer sufficient and could not be delivered to. Provide for the city's growing population, which was approximately three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight at the time. The pipeline from Pinya Mesa could no longer be maintained through the Colorado National Monument and there was no, no other way to deliver the water. And whereas the city of Fruta provides free irrigation water from its Pinya Mesa water rides to over fifty households in Glade Park. As part of the Glade Park Pipeline Water Users Association. GPOA via an agreement that can be terminated by the city. Whereas Enix Lake is surrounded by private property and reservoirs one, two and three are surrounded by and located upon US Forest Service land. And whereas WWW dot fruta.org forward slash mountain properties provides current. Updates and historical information, including expenses, challenges, historical timeline and details regarding the Fruta Mountain Properties. And whereas the city of Fruta has faced many challenges and costs managing these resources located approximately thirty-six miles outside of the city limits. And thus limiting resources that could otherwise be used in the Fruta city limits. And whereas the city of Fruta's primary goal is to provide necessary core services to residents and businesses in the city limits. As an organization, the city is focused on aligning resources, time and talent to provide the highest quality services while provide positively impacting. And increasing the quality of place, economic health and lifestyle of the Fruta community. And whereas for over a decade, staff has engaged with local, state and federal land agencies. And none have been willing to own or maintain the Fruta Mountain Properties. Whereas the challenges. With these Fruta Mountain Properties includes managing significant hazards and jurisdictional dams. A no fill order by the state of Colorado Division of Water Resources on Fruta Reservoir Two, illegal camping, trespassing, theft, vandalism. And other damages to private property, fires outside fire pits and left unattended illegal fireworks, discharging firearms. Discarding trash on private and public property, using private property to discard human fecal waste. And numerous calls to law enforcement over the years, which led to day use only restrictions. And whereas such challenges specifically at Enix Lake led the city, led to the city restricting overnight camping and designated Enix Lake. As a day use only recreation, the city to know more, to, to more thoroughly engaging with the Glade Park. Community and Public Lands Agencies, US Forest Service, Colorado Parks and Wildlife and Bureau of Land Management. The city holding a community open house in two thousand seventeen, the city educating residents via articles in the city's newsletter. Sent to all residents and to the city, holding public meetings to discuss the challenges surrounding the Fruta Mount properties. And whereas the city of Fruta contracted with Arnie Butler and Associates in two thousand, two thousand twenty-three to conduct an appraisal of Enix Lake. Which resulted in a value of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And whereas the city, the Fruta City Council directed staff to complete requests for. Proposals for breaching reservoir two and to compare such costs with the cost of repairing its dam to satisfy the state of Colorado's no fill order. And whereas in two thousand twenty-two, the city qualified for a natural resource conservation service, NRCS. For a preliminary investigative feasibility report, PIFR, for the East Creek watershed of the Fruta Mountain Properties. Which provides options and estimates as follows, two point five million to repair reservoir two dam, four million to repair reservoir. Four million to repair reservoir two dam and the pipeline infrastructure and one point three million to breach and decommission reservoir two. Whereas. Due to challenges, costs, amount of staff, time, resources pulled away from work within the city limits and future liability of costs to maintain jurisdictional dams. The city of Fruta is seeking to divest its interest in the Fruta Mountain Properties by selling or donating these properties to another entity. Allowing the city of Fruta to focus on core services within the city limits. And whereas the city prefers the Fruta Mountain Properties remain open to the public. However, the city recognizes the city should no longer be the entity to own, maintain and manage the properties. And whereas the city received an unsolicited offer, offer from surrounding property owners adjacent to Enix Lake to purchase the reservoir and surrounding. Land for a value of five hundred thousand plus the satisfaction of one hundred and forty thousand non-monetary performance obligation arising from dam repairs. The city currently owes Mr. Ron Tipping for labor and materials in connection with repair work. Mr. Tipping completed in two thousand seven on Enix Lake and Fruta Reservoir Number One. And as outlined in the city's charter, followed the ordinance process to consider the sale or conveyance of real property. to consider the sale or conveyance of real property. And whereas through the public process originally noticed June sixteen, twenty twenty-three, with the first reading at the June twenty, twenty twenty-three City Council Meeting and second reading and public hearing held at the July eighteen, twenty twenty-third, twenty twenty-three City Council Meeting continued to the August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three City Council Meeting. The Fruta City Council denied ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three oh seven regarding the sale of Enix Lake to further develop a pro, to further develop a process to take offers for the purchase of Enix Lake prior to going into ordinance, into ordinance process. And whereas the Fruta City Council established a process at the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council Meeting to list Enix Lake for sale through its Realtor Lori Chesnick and accepted offers and accept offers through November eighth, twenty twenty-three at five PM to be reviewed by City Council at its November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. And whereas the Fruta City Council directed staff at its September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council Meeting to continue working with you, the Ute Water Conservancy District, US Forest Service, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Bureau of Land Management, Mesa County, and all other partners, all other potential partners to seek solutions for Fruta Reservoirs One, Two, and Three, and the one hundred and twenty-five are acre parcel of land specifically to make formal offers of free donation in order of Ute Water Conservancy District, Mesa County, US Forest Service, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Fruta that the Fruta City Council seeks to divest the city of Fruta from owning, maintaining, and managing all city of Fruta mountain properties, including water rights by following the steps outlined above. And if the public entities decline the offers of donation, the city will proceed with listing the properties and water rights for sale following the same process as it did with Enix, Enix Lake. That was a mouthful.
I think you're missing an at.
We are, missing an at.
Yep.
Period and an and.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions on this item? All right. Is everybody good with, um, making this resolution tonight, or do we want to start our meeting?
Mayor, I, I move to approve the resolution as proposed.
All right. We've got a first and a second. Any other que, comments? All right. Hearing none, W, please poll council.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, we're going into the city manager's report. I didn't think you had anything tonight.
I do not.
All right. With that, we're gonna move into our council reports and actions. Uh, the only thing we've got is everybody should have received an email on the D fifty-one letter. I don't know if there's any what the questions or anything we need to add.
I, I thought it was really well done. I would, what, I wonder if we could add that we'd request um, a decision to be postponed.
I think that's a good, good idea.
Just stating that we are concerned about this, that we actually make a request in that letter.
Yeah.
We want to add some meat.
Don't have an ask.
Quest to delay becau, like with a because.
Until, until more public input can be considered or something.
And one of the, one of the other things that we had the conversation with is they're doing a needs assessment for all of their buildings. And I thought that's gonna be in
March.
March. So that was one of the other things that we talked about. I know Matthew, Mike and I is that, hey, why are they making a decision on boundary changes until they know what buildings really need the most work and kind of having that input.
So would you say that that would be what we're asking is that they postpone it till after that?
After the needs assessment, because it could be March, it could be April, it could.
They said they were, hopefully, hopefully we'll get it in March.
More community.
Like that's the reasonable request on our part. And we were giving him a specific time.
Mm-hmm. Needs request, more community outreach or high, higher quality outreach, something like that.
I think we had that in the letter is that we.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, it's like, we're requesting that you delay your, your, your decision because of these three items or two items. Be specific, not just, we want you to delay. Well, why?
To get more community input, to both receive and review the facility, uh, report that is due, uh, March, April.
And I think another.
Needs assessment, rather.
Would be another one to add is the, um, the impact to activities and such as was listed in there, but I like, I think would be a good recap saying, we're asking you to delay because of X. And we can be, of course, more, uh, more high-level, simple there, but I think it's good reasons to say. If I remember reading the, the reading the letter yesterday, or this morning, um, that it talks about the various issues, but it's like per se, we're asking to delay because of X, Y, and Z.
Mike, I, I know that there was a little bit of a discussion when we had talked about it, about the good faith kind of vote that we had put forward when we had talked to him. And I don't know how to word that.
Yeah.
We, we had a conversation about it when we were talking about the letter. It's kind of hard to maybe put that in there, but is there verbiage about it? Or I didn't see anything in there about it.
Yeah. So we, we had it in our talking points that we and I get, just if you don't mind, real quick for the audience's benefit, um, we're talking about tomorrow night, the District Fifty-One, uh, Board of Education is due to consider making a, a boundary change to, to elementary schools that come into the Fruta Monument High School boundary. And we feel that it was a rushed process without a lot of engagement. And so we would like some consideration. Uh, when, when the mayor, Mayor Protem and I met with, uh, their a board president and staff, uh, we did share that. The reason I left it out of the draft, so I'm glad you brought it up, because I think this is a good clarification, is that the only, the only official, we kept in there that the, the process they've gone through has alluded to, or, or actually tied, I think we use the word tied in there, right? To the, um, the possibility of in, asking for funding to expand Fruta Monument High School. When we brought up that we were asked to support the, the, the the bond, Grand Junction Bond for, uh, Grand Junction High School, sorry. Um, that was, when we went back and looked at the records, and because they were kind of like, well, I don't think we've ever made a promise to that. When we went back and looked at the records, that was the bond committee. So that's not the district. So that was Tim Foster, Sarah Schrader saying, and then hopefully the next one would be. So I left it out because I didn't want something in your letter that's, that we can't verify. Does that make sense?
Well, and Mike, and I'll clarify this too, because on the other side, yes. For them to go to a bond for Fruta, what, if they get this needs assessment and the needs assessment says there's four other schools that are higher priority than us, then that's gonna be really hard for us to say, hey, wait, you know, we should be next when they've got this study. So I think for me, the study is probably just as important to get, you know, information on making the best decision.
Dude, I know you said that we're, we're running out of time. You gotta get this to them tomorrow, but can you add that in? Just basically another paragraph that's basically the ask. And do you need us to sign off on it? Or are we okay to just let?
Tonight you're gonna prove if you want me to sign it or not. So that's what they ask in.
That's what I'm saying, as written.
Oh, no, right.
I'm trying to figure out.
Prove it as amended with those.
As amended with.
Yeah. Can I read back? Maybe this could almost be one paragraph at the end, right? That basically says that, um, the city council requests a delay in deciding the bound, you know, these specific boundary changes. To first have more community engagement and feedback. So that's one thing. Uh, the results of the ongoing needs facility study, that'd be the, the second thing. And then more thorough information on other impacts. Uh, about the boundary change would have to Fruta Monument High School. Is that, is that okay? If we just added that to what we have? Okay.
Perfect.
Um, are you, this would probably be good for you all to uh, make a motion that the mayor sign the letter with those changes.
That's what we normally would do. Move to we, who the mayor just signed the letter.
Second.
You too.
We've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Hearing none, W, would you please poll council?
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. With it, is there anybody else that has any council reports that they'd like to have tonight? All right. Who wants to go first? She, well, she's beating James every time. So go ahead, Jenny.
I have a question, really. Um, we're meeting with the the Localism Committee is meeting on Wednesday. I know Ciara has some good notes of like what to, how to start that off. But is there anything specific from, I'm gonna be there to the, I mean, what's the real starting point?
That's a great question. I feel like that's.
Some really good notes that we got from the Downtown Advisory Board last time, but, um,
So I. Cause I'm a little in the weeds on what the actual committee's scenario is. What is the committee going to do?
Of course, they're gonna want to know Wednesday.
Yeah.
So i- if we type Tabor Committee as an example, so Tabor Committee was out there to research what has happened in the past, what they're, what they're recommending based on the information. It was budget. It was looking at, you know, whether they want to sunset it. So a committee's responsibility is to give us information on whether we should form a board for that. So that's what I'm, so they're gonna bring idea, ideas and other things to us that are, what, what they think this board should look like and what it should do, and it doesn't meet the goals of the city. I think that's the bigger priority.
Yeah. So maybe reviewing those, the, those.
And it's in the application, I believe. It's like the whole website. And I think along with that is by, proposed bylaws. So I think it maps out honestly on the website and the application quite well.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree. And, uh, talking to Ciara today, I know the, the plan was first, you know, just in general, make sure everybody knows each other, introductions, uh, restating why the council appointed a committee, which is to look into the, the whether we should or how we should create, I think it was more of the how we should create a uh, a new board in place of the Downtown Advisory Board that would be the Localism Board. Um, and then she, then we have some pretty comprehensive notes from the minutes of, of your discussion. Um, so in summary, this isn't, I won't, off the top of my head, remember every bit of it, but some of those big things are to create a board that can help with these types of micro events within the city, right? To a board that could help, uh, extend the city's communication efforts further into the community and reaching groups that we may not be reaching as well with all the standard uh, items with a goal of trying to educate Fruta residents on more ways they can participate and be local, um, uh, kind of in, in, uh, similar to educating and advertising to visitors. This is actually to put a little bit more emphasis tied to our comprehensive plan and some of those values and the goals of educating existing residents that may, may be more like, uh, bedroom community residents and not, not to mean, but you know, have we have a lot of people that have moved here. They might, they might work in another community and their commute takes them, uh, less time to ex, explore within the city. And so being that kind of, uh, that group to help with, with local community events, local community messaging, and local community education on, on being local and supporting local and participating local. So that's kind of the general.
Like a good plan in place.
But so, so the kickoff meeting this week will be kind of just go over all that. Then they're gonna be tasked with, what do they need to know to be able to make that recommendation, which could result in questions coming back to the council? Could result in a future workshop, joint discussion, you know, it could result in, um, you know, a number of things before making a recommendation of, you know, one, how they see this to be, how it could be effective, and are, are there other pieces missing, right?
I'm excited to hear what they come up with, because we have a very diverse, we ended up with a very diverse group that, yeah, that I think will represent well. Great. I'll save everything else for.
All right. Yep, Aaron?
Uh, just two items. One is, just wanted to see if there's an update with the park, the public parking lot over by the museums.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, Mark Van Cuso has, has been working with, uh, Julia, uh, oh, I just.
McQ.
McQ at, uh, Dinosaur Journey. And, um, we've offered to move him to the back forum. Um, they've said they're in the process, they're, they're in the process of doing two things. Two are being listed on GovDells for, GovDills for sale, and the other two are gonna be moved to Cross Orchard. So they're looking at more of a long-term versus like the moving back and forth. Um, we offered to move them in the meantime there, and they said, we've got it, but they haven't moved yet, but we're super, we're excited, we're excited. We're excited that there's a longer term solution versus what we've done in the, this kind of back and forth, right? So, so, um, and I uh, so that, that's in, in process, but I'm not quite sure how long that'll take.
It's good. It's funny, because we went there yesterday to the dog park and right when we were there, it was fully Cousin Eddie just pulled up with his popped out the whole deal, started his generator up. And I'm like, and that's exactly why. Yeah. So thank you for that, Mark. Appreciate that work on that.
Last item, this might be for Kimberly. You can pun if you want to, Mike. Um, appropriately or not, I guess you can pun it. No. Um, so right now Twenty Road's got a lot of construction on it. That's blocked off from coming down as a, down Twenty Road on Six and Fifty. Now I'm, like, I saw signs on Nineteen Road saying Nineteen Road's gonna be closed next week. That's it. Um, down by, um,
It's right by Six and Fifty.
It's, it's, yeah, it, yeah. So between, yeah. And so it's saying the roads can be closed. I have just a huge concern. It's like, well, what are we gonna do? You know, sometimes I think we've, I think we've struggled with some signage and this is some big signage, so there's not big detours. Like I was just detoured last week or a week before with, um, with some emergency, uh, quick fixes on K Road that didn't last quick, uh, went for like five, six hours. And there was no detour information. And so now it's like, huh. What's, what's my detour? I live, I live off of K and Nineteen. So what's my detour if I can't go down nineteen or twenty? Like where's, what are we doing to make sure that that's done right? That so our community is well informed of apparently Nineteen Road closing?
Yeah, I think I'm trying to.
You're gonna take away from Kimberly? She was. You got up like you wanted it.
Gave me a look that I thought she punted. I'm just gonna double check. Uh, do, are, are you aware of? Okay. John, are you aware of, of?
Yeah, you have to come up to the microphone, John.
Should come up to this.
Come on, buddy.
So while, while he's coming up, I.
You get punted back to you.
You got the ball, my guy.
Yeah, while he's coming up, I know, I know our engineering department's involved. Uh, I wish, I wish we had a rep, representative here. I, I, I think the, the, the big steps that have been taken is putting the digital sign that says, you know, like.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I don't think it's for a long period of time, but John, if you wanna.
So John Grillo, Public Works Superintendent. Just some assumptions. There's a sixty-five-year-old gas line that XL owns down that corridor. They've done some replacement on Nineteen and a Half Road and K Road already. None of those permits have hit the city of Fruta within the boundaries, so we haven't rebooted them yet. So that's, that's my assumption right now.
So because it's. It's not city of Fruta property?
Yeah, but somebody else is closing down our road without us knowing about it.
All, all of Nineteen Road isn't even all of our road currently, but.
But if you think, if it's Mesa County, then would they not inform city of Fruta?
Yeah, so it's just the people in this room aren't aware of the details, uh, at the moment, but um, yeah, it's, my understanding is it's utility work. And so they've gone through the, the process and put the notice out, which is which, which is appropriate and notice to have a sign letting people know well ahead of time.
Yes, it gives notice, but lacking of, it'd be nice to have further information, but.
Well, I, I don't know if I've ever seen one of those signs passing that starts explaining the project.
No, no. Road closed next week.
Yeah.
Week of the sixteen. There's no, that's it.
Oh, you're meaning like duration and.
Updates on.
Uh, next week. That is it. So.
Our bridge experience. They're like, we're not putting any dates on anything.
And to our benefit, we have a meeting tomorrow night. It'd be nice if we can get enough.
Yeah, yeah, we should, we can get more information by tomorrow night. Easy.
We all know what assuming does. And so, um, it'd be nice if we could have some information, then of course, uh, filter that out, if, especially if it really is going to cut off Nineteen and Twenty. Twenty's cut off, right?
Correct.
If Nineteen's cut off, we need to do some great communication. We have a rock star that can do it for us.
Make sure it's not.
We need to.
Not misinformed.
That's quite alarming seeing that the end of last week. And then.
You're gonna have to talk into the mic if you're.
Public Works does review and approve traffic control plans for any road closure that's done in the city. And as John indicated, it just hasn't probably hit our desk yet. Public Works does review and approve traffic control plans for any road closure that's done in the city. And as John indicated, it just hasn't probably hit our desk yet. Do that review.
Are they allowed to put up signs like you'd think that like you'd get the stuff before they put the stuff like there's a, it seems to the um those that aren't pros.
Communicating uh
Yeah.
All of their intentions and timelines to the city.
It just seems like we got some things backwards. And I my 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 point is, you know, what are we, how are we going to communicate to the community, especially where twenty's closed, nineteen's closed, eighteen gets pretty dang busy.
Great question.
At eighteen. When schools in and out, that's going to be horrific for the city. Um, if we don't have a good plan, and even if we have a good plan, it's not going to be much fun if they really are closing it down, but.
Well, if if the duration, we'll find out for next, I won't make assumptions, but if if it if it is just for next week, then we're great because school's out and we're right.
John will be back tomorrow night to give us a full report.
See the excitement on his face.
Nope. Appreciate it. Thank you, Southie.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, does anybody else have anything? Because we also have council reports tomorrow night. Well, no, we have a workshop, but.
Uh, just real quick, I have a speaking engagement tomorrow at five forty-nine.
Okay.
Uh.
So you may not be here.
Seven minutes.
Okay.
Assuming everything runs on time, I will be here. Um, I just want to give a warning. I may be a few minutes late, depending on how it goes.
Okay.
Oh, I did RSVP for the G JAP holiday party. We've been getting like a ton of, I don't know if you guys have been getting all of this? And I didn't, I didn't um notify Deb of that. I just realized.
We do put it on public calendar normally.
Emails, it just came through though.
Oh, I've got it.
It's been coming to you. Yeah.
Times. I'm like, okay, all right. They want us at this party.
One of the last one came from Curtis.
Yeah, there's been multiple for a multiple of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the season.
But that will be put on the public calendar, correct, Mike? Because that's what we normally do when they got invites like that.
I did too. I did too. Multiple. We all did except you. They don't want you.
Is there, is there any other council reports? Did you have a report besides that?
I'm good.
All right, since there are no other reports, the time is now seven forty-two P M. Where you're going to conclude our special meeting. Thank you, everyone.